Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall meeting for August 20, 2024. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to, again, please, call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Here.
Ganzie?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Again, if anyone would like to address the committee this evening, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone on line, John?
Bill Maher.
All right, we'll move on. Standing committee reports. Police and Health Committee Chairman Swansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The agenda item this evening is consideration for membership in the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative, the IBC. A commitment to fiscal responsibility remains a top priority when considering best options for employee benefits. Village administration has been diligent in the annual evaluation of employment employee benefit plans and the cost of these plans. Recent developments have indicated membership in the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative for the annual renewal is both fiscally and operationally appropriate for the new benefit plan renewals effective January 1st, 2025. The current cost in total premiums for medical insurance is $3,911,880. Last year, the village experienced a 5% increase in medical insurance premiums. The proposed rates from the IPBC create a cost savings in overall premiums for all benefit programs essentially equal to $200,000 for the initial year. So we can turn this over to Janelle.
Hello. Thank you so much for allowing us to present the village's opportunity to join the cooperative. It is a partnership that's been developed many years in the making, and it involves many entities throughout the state of Illinois. As a matter of fact, they're considering, I think, eight new members for January 1st renewals. So I, again, appreciate the opportunity to present to you this opportunity for us. As trustee Swansky had stated, we have always been committed to providing benefits that are fiscally responsible for the village but also beneficial to our employees in establishing opportunities for our employees and for us to be competitive to retain and recruit employees to gain employment with our organization. So without further ado, I'm going to have introduced to you Dave Cook. He is the executive director of IPBC. Dave's been with the organization for, I don't know how many years, a long time. And so I'm going to turn it over to him to present the information and entertain any questions from the board, so.
Oh, okay. Good evening. As Janelle said, I'm Dave Cook. I'm the executive director of the IPBC. Just to give you a little background of myself real quickly, I think it's important. I spent 32 years in local government, the last 23 at the village of Hinsdale, the last date as a village manager of Hinsdale, semi-retired. Took over as the first executive director of the IPBC in 2013, when we had 68 members. Today, as of this morning, Kendall County became our 168th member. So you've seen a huge amount of growth, and I think it's very important to point that out because I say this all the time, you know, people ask me, why the cooperative? And it's not a lot different than why you buy rock salt off the state bid. Volume matters. And now we have over 22,000 lives that we cover. We get the best prices. We get some volume discounts. Just real quickly, if you want to go to the next slide, please. I know it's been a long evening. I've been through many of these board meetings and hearings, so I appreciate where you're sitting at, so I'll try to be as brief as possible but to be as thorough as it can be. The IPBC is an intergovernmental agency. We are created through state statutes. All our powers, all our authority comes directly from the Illinois Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. If you look at Section 6, there is a special section on joint risk pools, whether they be medical or property casual. Everything comes from that statute. We are open to any unit of local government. We have mostly municipalities, but we have counties, park districts, library districts, special districts, a lot of things throughout the state of Illinois. When you join the IPBC, you become a member. Every year, by state statutes, if for whatever reason you decide to leave, you have that option. New members, once you adopt a resolution, the executive board of the IPBC would approve your application to join. One of the big differences between where you're currently at and what the cooperative, the members run the organization. And when I say that, the members decide what the renewals are going to be, they decide what their policies, the groups, everything. It's not Blue Cross, it's not Delta Dental telling you what the rules are. We have a very, very active government agents, government leadership opportunities, an executive board, a membership development committee, a finance committee, an operating committee. If you add all those together, almost 40% of our members directly are in one of the committees or on the executive board that control the IPBC. I can make any recommendation I can, but I don't have a vote. Next slide, please. Just to give you a quick notice of what's going around, thank you. Your neighbors around the area, you can see that you're pretty much completely surrounded by IPBC members. And also, the Bartlett Fire Protection District joined the IPBC about three years ago, so they have been a very good member. Next slide, please. What makes the IPBC different than other health benefit providers? If you can go to the next slide, please. At the top there, the first advantage, financial stability and predictability. If there was not financial predictability and stability, there would not be an IPBC. IPBC was founded by government finance officers, which I came from. I was president of IGFLA in 1998. We tend to be a little conservative. One of the things we don't do, we make sure when we bring new members in, they're going to be beneficial to the membership. It's a win for the new member, but I always said it's got to be a win for the other 168 members. The last thing you want to do is bring in members who are going to not benefit the pool. You're going to get a lot of additional data that you're currently not getting. At the bottom, one of the things, two of the things I really will plant on this slide, plan design flexibility. Obviously, Illinois is a very, a state that has a lot of unions and a lot of power in those unions. We have the flexibility to port the plan 100%. The members, your employees, will have the same benefits they had today unless you decide you want to change them. That's a very important part. I mentioned early on about the benefits of pooling the purchasing power. We just, I can just give you a couple real quick ones. We just renegotiated a direct contract for prescription drugs. We got a 32% discount over what we previously had. And a lot of that reason was because we went over in total, what they call belly buttons in the industry, over 50,000. We moved into the highest level of discounts from Express Script. Those are the kind of things you're going to see. If you look at the quote, your life insurance rates are going to go down dramatically because we have one policy for over 25,000 employees and retirees. You get those kinds of rates. Next slide, please. Just real quickly, this is another area where it gives a lot of protection to our members. With your PPO plan, right now, basically, your stop-loss becomes at 50,000. Anything above 50,000 becomes a pooled risk across the pool. And why is that important? It takes those catastrophic claims, those peaks and valleys, out of your rate renewals. We spread that across as a fixed cost. In addition, this is one of the areas where we really save money. The IPBC has over $220 million in the bank. We can self-finance our stop-loss up to 1.5 million. If you understand stop-loss, for every dollar you buy, it costs you about $1.30. This is one of the areas where we really save our members money. Next slide, please. Just real quickly, the next few slides are really going to, I'm going to talk about, you know, as you pointed out, there's savings in the first year, but the IPBC really is a long-term investment. That's where the dividends really pay. Our five-year PPO average is 3.7. The blue line on the top is what medical trend has been since 2010. You can see in every year, we have beaten outside medical trend. Next slide. On the HMO side, which is actually your higher population, you can see our five-year average is at 2%. And there again, we've beaten the market every year. Next slide, please. In addition, one of the things you're not getting today, where you're sitting, is we give back dividends. At the end of the year, when there's money left over, that money goes back to our members. On the PPO side, we're averaging a 1.8% dividend. On the HMO side, a 5.2% dividend on an annual basis. Next slide. Of anything you see today, this is the slide that probably speaks most to me. And I talk about the IPBC being a long-term investment. Even though you, your five-year trend is 3.7%, the IPBC trend over five years is 2.7, plus we're giving back dividends on an annual basis based upon your percentages. With the roughly $200,000 decline from your current year premiums, so actually, your premiums next year are, it's much more than, if you get any increase, it's $200,000 plus that increase for next year. You can see over five years, that becomes $2.9 million. Those assumptions remain the same based upon it. And that's the true value of the IPBC, and that's why members, when they join, they do not leave, rarely. Next slide. Just a picture there of all our current benefit providers. We do have Blue Cross and Unit Healthcare. You're going with Blue Cross Express Scripts. We do carve out our prescription drugs. Compsych is one of those, it's our EAP provider. It comes to the members at no additional charge. Delta Dental is our dental, our dental provider. Securing Life is our life insurance provider. VSP is our vision provider. PlanSource is a program that comes to the village. It's an enrollment eligibility program that really will help them one-stop shopping. And I'm sure Janelle will like it, along with, if you have any HRAs, FSAs, that's our WEC product, so. Next slide. One other thing I want to point out is that the IPBC, from myself down to our service team, all we do is service local governments. We know the ins and outs. We know the retiree obligations. We can talk about annual comprehensive financial plans. We understand placebo. All the nuances, the local government, it's what we do every day, 365 days a year. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Please, fire away.
Are there any instances where you do not renew with the village or organization?
Once you are a member of the IPBC, unless you violate the bylaws of the IPBC, there is no ability for us to expel a member.
So your fiscal year begins on July 1st?
The IPBC fiscal year is July 1st. Your plan year is calendar. Your rates will change on a calendar year. Well, another nice advantage for you, whether you, some of our members have a July through June plan year, some, most of them, it's about 50/50. Irrespective, we will set rates for the following year in March, so you'll have nine months advance notice on what your rates will be for the following plan year.
Is it beneficial to have a short term through July 1st and then start a new policy running concurrent with yours? Or does it not make any difference?
No, it really doesn't.
Our renewal is up at the end of the year, Janelle.
And because you're in Cook County, the property taxes, almost all my Cook County municipalities run on a calendar year.
And when was the last year that dividends were generated? Dividends generated, were they, when was the last time, last year that they were generated?
They, I have been a part of the IPBC since 1990 as a delegate, then became a member. There has been, in that, what's that, 34 years, always been a dividend every year.
Thank you.
Those 34 years, some small, but there has been dividend every year.
So we have to maintain fund balances for administrative benefit and wellness? We have to maintain fund balances for administrative benefit and wellness separately?
The only requirement on a fund balance is after six years in the IPBC, you need to have a two-month reserve. You can build that fund balance over the first six years of your membership.
So there's not a minimum that we have to maintain?
Two-month reserve after six years.
But right now?
No.
Okay. And there's a reserve account balance for deficits that has to be maintained also, right?
There again, the only requirement is to have a two-month reserve.
After six years.
After, now, I will say that in the bylaws, there is a provision that if you did go have a negative, for some reason, you had two horrible years, your first two years, you would get an invoice for the deficit after one complete full year in the IPBC. The first year does not count.
Okay, so you're not requiring a balance for it, though, but it's possible that we could, there could be a deficit, right?
It is possible. I have never seen it.
So would we feel it'd be prudent to set up an account for that type of thing, or do you all feel comfortable that we would not be in that situation?
I would think that we would just stick the dividends that we get each year into some type of a general insurance fund balance and use that for the two-month fund balance at the end of six years and also the deficit fund balance if that should ever happen.
Like I said, we, one thing we do, you know, like, we're conservative. We've seen your claims, we've seen your plan designs. Milliman is our, is our underwriter who wrote the book on health underwriting. We're conservative. We, last thing we want to do is come, bring someone in, and you have a bad year. That's just not the way we operate.
Does our staff anticipate any increased costs for administration audits? Are we using a third-party administrator? Or are we doing it?
No, we're not using a third-party administrator.
Okay. Do you anticipate any increased costs to comply with anything? No? No? What are the plans we're offering?
So the first year, we're going to offer the same plans that we have effective now. Discussing it with Dave and his staff, they suggested to try to keep the plans the same so we can kind of gain some momentum and see where we land. And so we don't want to, we don't want to make too many plan design changes. So we have three PPO plans and one HMO plan currently. And one of those is a, is a high deductible plan with an HSA.
I have a question for you, Janelle. When you were putting this together for us to review and you saw that there was multiple towns surrounding us, have you reached out to any of them to get their feedback as to how they, how it was presented to them and if it was, what it was presented?
I did, actually. That was a great question. I did solicit my HR colleagues, and I received wonderful feedback. There were pros and cons to both. I think mostly positive. One of the biggest cons, but I had already talked to Dave about this, is because of the growth that they have experienced, there's a lot more customer service that's required, and they've already established a plan for taking care of that. So I'm not concerned about it at all. As a matter of fact, a couple of my colleagues have been with different municipalities and experienced both not being in the IPBC and being in the IPBC, and they said it's, it's a tremendous relief to be a part of such a group because of the substantial savings that they've recognized regarding renewals.
I also spoke to Chief Gabrunia because they were a fairly new member to IPBC, and I was concerned about the transition time, and that was all very positive for them. It was very smooth, and they're very happy with IPBC.
I just don't, I just didn't want to, I want to make sure that the other villages didn't find that the insurance was less and that's where the savings came from and how that worked.
What I can appreciate most about the IPBC is that, like Dave had said, there's so much potential buying power, and so there's a lot of stability. And so we don't, we won't have to make changes to plan designs and things like that. I mean, obviously, we're going to look at that every year as we have in the past seven, since Paula's taken the helm, we've really been diligent because that was her promise to this board, is that we would be diligent in looking at plan design and making changes that are fiscally responsible to the village. And so I don't have a concern with that because we have, we can shop different providers and we can design the plans around our needs, and so we are diligent with that, so.
And I think in looking at these over the last several years, when we tried to look at changes in our plan design because of our size, it really limited us in what our options were available to us to tweak the, tweak the plan design. However, with being in the broader pool, we certainly have a lot more options on how we can make adjustments to best benefit the village and to best benefit our employees.
I think we, we've been looking at this for several years now, but we did not have the right loss of priority.
I have been stalking Dave for a long time and catching him at all kinds of joint ventures. Are we ready yet? Are we ready yet? You know, we had to get some of our experience house in order on our end so that we would be a viable candidate for IPBC, and we're at that point now.
I want to thank you for the work that you've done. I think it's going to be beneficial to the, to the village.
How many employees does this cover? Everybody? What's that number?
We currently have a, what, 162, 63 full-time employees?
Good.
Would we consider having someone on the board of directors? Are those people from like the local?
Janelle's going to have more meetings to go to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great presentation, too. Thank you.
So our next step is to bring a resolution to you at our next board meeting so that Dave can present us as a candidate for membership with his board.
Fantastic.
I trust the ordinance is, since Ansel Greencrew wrote the, goes back to Stuart Diamond's days.
Thank you for being here.
No problem.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Chairman Swansky. Next item we have this evening is Licensed Ordinance Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda, and that's the elected official salaries. I think we discussed this at two other committee meetings. During the discussion about changes to the clerks and deputy clerks' officer positions, a request is made for review of officers' compensation. I think the only decision we have to make is whether we are going to have a 2% increase or no increase every year. Does that seem right?
What is shown, I believe in the memo is... Is, you spoke about annual increase or a, an increase at the terms. So that is a distinction that maybe Kurt, you could explain a little bit, how that term would work.
Yeah, certainly. So the Illinois Constitution and the Illinois Municipal Code prevents any elected official's compensation from being increased during their term. We have staggered terms on the board here. So any increase that we adopt now is only going to apply to those trustees and elected officials that are elected in 2025. Those elected officials that were elected in 2023, no increases are going to happen until 2027. So that's why there's this, you know, how we want to structure it, or essentially, it's going to change every two years just because that's when you're going to have people being re-elected and those increases could happen. So it just depends on how the board wants to structure that. If you want to have those changes happen every two years, revisit it, or do you just want to set it and then come back whenever the board feels it's appropriate to address it again?
I would rather revisit it.
I have a problem with this. You know, I look at this, and it's Chairman Hopkins' committee, and he has another two and a half years to serve before he can get an increase. I don't think...
That's, that's unfortunately a restriction of the Illinois Constitution.
I'm going to, yeah, I mean, I have never, the original conversation that was brought up about this was for clerk. It trickled into all elected officials here, so.
I think the trustees are very minimal, and I think the work that the village president does, I mean, Kevin, he does, I mean, so much. The dedication that he's shown here is, I mean, way above what he receives. So I think he puts more money into it than he probably gets.
Right now, that's the case, yeah.
Well, as I stated...
You shouldn't have to pay to do it.
As I stated at the last meeting, I think that if we take a look at the average salaries that are throughout the community, I think we should really kind of lend that. It doesn't do much for us at all, I mean, but we're looking at the village president getting an increase, and obviously, a village clerk, you know. But we're talking, what, about 100 bucks for us? It's, you know, just make it the average and call it a day, and let's move on.
Yeah, and but I think the only question, like trustee Hopkins was saying, is it, is it a 2% every cycle? Is that what you need to know?
It's up to the board if you want to include an automatic escalator or if you'd like to just revisit.
I think automatic escalator just makes it easier.
Yeah.
I don't know that I agree with that.
Why not?
I think that it's, I just think it's something that should be reviewed to see where, where everyone is, where our residents are at any particular given time, how the board is functioning at any particular given time.
Well, you talk about a nominal amount. 2% is nothing to speak of. I mean, you know, the functions that we attend, the contributions we make to some of the civic organizations around, I mean, you know, I know that the salary that we're talking about, $4,500, my God, we go, I don't want to speak for myself, but...
Well, as long as there's one trustee that wants to review it, let's just leave it as a review. Doesn't matter. Yeah, okay.
Before 180 days before each?
Yep.
And again, it'll only apply to that cycle.
And I think that is a good thing for the public to get aware of, too, because then they understand exactly what's going on. Maybe they'll stop coming up and asking you how much you get, what your salary is.
How much are your benefits?
Yeah.
So is this the proposal, 12-8, 12-9-2, and 44-50? Is that, is that what?
That's the average.
Okay, so we haven't established a natural number yet.
No, that's what the discussion here tonight is.
I'm comfortable with what is presented here.
I agree.
I agree.
Do you have a word?
When was the last time there was, this was discussed? 23 years ago?
Never happened since I've been on board.
It was 2001.
It's been over 13 years.
101 or 92?
20.
It was the last time that was... Yeah, because we've never talked about it.
Two years.
22 years.
So based on that, I agree with...
We must have been really getting paid over 22 years.
I agree with Renee. It doesn't have to be 2% every term, but maybe, maybe a certain percentage every five years.
We should just trigger something 180 days before the, every election and then have a discussion.
Excellent.
Adam, what did you propose, please? I didn't understand.
Just what's presented.
Okay.
Can I ask?
I want to clarify that.
Is the mayor, village president, 12-8 inclusive of the $1,000 liquor commissioner money, or is that in addition to?
Does other villages split that out?
Some do, don't they?
Yeah, some do and some do not.
But this number here?
This number here is just village president's salary.
So the liquor commissioner would be the same? We wouldn't increase that? We'd leave that the same?
1,000 dollars. I think that was pretty consistent. 1,000 was pretty consistent across liquor commissioner.
Just wanted to see where the number moved.
Any other questions from the committee? We'll send this on to the village board for a final vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Tonight, we have one item on here, and it is the recreational vehicle parking discussion. Since 1983, the Municipal Code only permits recreational vehicles, other than snowmobiles and snowmobile trailers, to be parked on driveways of single-family or duplex lots between May 1st and October 31st. Recently, a resident requested that the start date be moved to allow him to park his boat on the driveway March through April. The staff drafted a text amendment to change the start date for recreational vehicles to March 1st or April 15th, as suggested by the commission of the hall. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing at their August 1st, 2024 meeting and recommended that the current state, or start date, remain May 1st. And was there any follow-up to that, Kristi?
I think it was based on one resident's opinion to change the ordinance for just one complaint where it hasn't been an ongoing issue.
And I think we just, I think we discussed that exact thing, too, so.
I agree with what Planning and Zoning voted for, recommended on May 1st.
So if Planning and Zoning voted a recommendation to keep it as is, if you guys are good, let's just pass this on and bring it to the board for a vote. Keep it as is. We don't even need to.
We don't even...
We don't need to because it's staying the same.
This was if we wanted to... This was if we wanted to start the process.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Laporte. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank God. Hope we turn that off.